Here.
John.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
And here.
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the agenda?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm looking at what's the time and place for discussion items that aren't already on the agenda with the time limit agreement at each. Discussion possible action in reference to Phase One of Sports Complex. We kind of talked about this last time that I had an work with a police sergeant who was here tonight. I was in YTT. After we talked last time that this was presented, you know, we talked about potentially removing Walnut Street. I understand there were some concerns about having it through Third Avenue. Just so you guys are aware, I've also received phone calls from the folks at Myrtle Meadow concerned about Walnut Street being an access point to the sports complex just because of all the traffic. So there's both sides, or you know, Third Avenue has complaints, so does Walnut. So what I did is had YTT show this plan to you to include Third Avenue and resurface. I also had the idea that without Walnut Street, that creates a little bit more room there. So I actually had her look at moving two ball diamonds down to the corners of the first phase. So as you can see in the picture in front of you, the southeast corner, that would be and the northwest corner would have line infields. The fencing wouldn't be there, we'd do something with portable fencing. And the purpose of that would be to still utilize all the green space for soccer. So the thought is with it, we can kind of, with two diamonds there, we could have instant revenue where we could host tournaments. We'd free up some of the strain that Green has on not being able to schedule ball teams on the diamonds that we currently have. And I think long-term, it would help alleviate some of the pressure of jumping into Phase Two right away, knowing that it's going to cost quite a bit. So Lisa's here to talk more about that, but that's what the drawing is in front of you. And then the cost of opinion, just rough numbers for that drawing.
You guys have any questions? Just looking at that off the top of your head, this new idea that now has baseball fields or has ball fields, they're not full regulation baseball size. We did look at that, they won't fit. They need 300 foot, the area where the soccer fields are isn't big enough to fit a full baseball field. One of the things we did talk about for Third Avenue, I'll just get a little background on that project. If we do extend through West Third Avenue, this would be a continuation of the water main with that loop from this new connection. And we are, the city engineers are putting a new well and some other services over in the nature park area. So this would be a nice continuation of that project that's going on. So then the water main would loop all the way over to Washington and connect there. We wouldn't even have to do the loop that goes down Walnut. Everything, if we dropped off, if we got rid of Walnut Street, we would get rid of having to loop the water main down there. We would get rid of all the storm sewer that goes on that road, all the paving and the sidewalk. And then the water main would go over to Washington, which is a nice design that's actually pretty good for infrastructure. We have a little bit of storm sewer to extend. And then we would be taking Third Avenue from Seal Coat asphalt that it is now. It's about 20 feet wide at the most. It's not a full-size road at this point. And we would follow through with this statement, 28-foot road that is normal here would connect over to the intersection of Washington. Be full curving gutter standard road. It would be a little wider than it is now because like I said, it's only about 20-some feet wide right now. But the intersection of Washington is ready for it. It's got all, all four quadrants of the intersection.
Yeah, those quadrants, right.
Yeah, it's ready to go. We just, we tied it at, there's even sidewalks there, so we can even have that connection for the sidewalk.
Is it, is it going to work with the, and there's, there's, the two houses on the north side of Third there?
They're going to get new driveways.
The first one's got the garage really close, they wouldn't be able to park in their driveway anymore. And I think that might be the same thing on the, on the east, westernmost house.
If you look at the way it's currently laid out, the northern side of West Third is actually close to the approximate curb line it would be at full build-out. It's the south side of West Third that could extend.
You can see the south side of Third, there's, maybe a lot of holes to move, but it's actually, the north is pretty close to that, to the road right now.
This, but there's no sidewalk there yet.
There is no sidewalk there, no.
So we pave it and then there's three, four feet, then there's a four-foot sidewalk. You're, you're taking seven, eight feet away from that driveway up northern. And you know what, I don't know the people who live there, I just, I know they were in here talking about the hardship that that would cause.
It may actually be the south side.
Can I just, are you pulling from the south side to make up some of that? Is that, so we're not really taking theirs, we're, we're taking it from the south and moving theirs down?
We're actually going to hold the north line, the north, so there's three houses on the north side. You would hold that curb line where it kind of is, pretend there's a curve there. Hold the edge of the pavement there, that would be like a new curb line. So that's really not going to change that much. We would probably put the sidewalk on the north side just because that's the way the intersection's ready for it. But not to say we can't put it on the south side. Then on the south side, we would actually extend a road, it's about 500 feet or so, to make that whole width. So that the south side is where they're going to see more pavement. So the people on the south side are the ones who are going to see less grass there because the road's coming towards them to line up with the curb line that's already existing in Washington.
So I guess what Nate's asking is how much are the people on the north side going to lose when you put in the sidewalk and everything?
They basically wouldn't lose any driveway length. They would just now have a sidewalk that would go through their driveway.
But would their back of their car be in the way of the sidewalk?
It could potentially be, yeah. If they're currently parking and that their car is like almost at the curb line, then they're, they're going to be in the way of the sidewalk if we put it in. And I haven't looked that detail into it. We were just running through trying to figure out what our options were here, but that is how it would be. There, I can't tell you the exact how far their houses are right now. We actually weren't planning on extending Third, this was never included. So our survey, when we did the topographical survey, we only stopped at that first house because that was our type. So I can tell you a lot about that house, but I can't tell you about the other two houses that go towards Washington.
I just think we're in for a fight if we try to do Third. I understand people are concerned about Walnut, but that seems to be the most logical thing to continue with. If we need, in fact, need two entrances and exits to the, to the one.
Those houses should be at the setback. So there should be 25 to be set back to the house.
Yeah, I don't think Third's too high.
The garage I'm concerned with, with the one that's on Washington, Third. And I, you're right, I think the, I think the westernmost house is probably okay. But, okay.
How soon did you get out here and reshoot it?
We have it pretty soon, we've come up.
I mean, I think that's kind of what you guys want to see, is see some stakes and where.
I, I know, I know the residents do, they were already here once, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think that probably helped alleviate some questions, get it out there.
So where the curb line would be, here's what.
Yeah, where the curb line would be, where the sidewalk would be, where their driveway would end.
Yeah.
And I, how big their cars are, because I don't, I don't think they'll be, they'll be fitting on the driveway and not in the way of a sidewalk when we get all set up.
And can we also look at potentially south, what that would do if we put a sidewalk on the south?
I think you have to, if you're going to shoot the north.
Yeah, we're going to look at both sides. And maybe going on the south side with the sidewalk, maybe there's more room, maybe it makes more sense, less impact.
Looks like there's more room, I just, I see another resident's going to be upset when we start nosing around over there.
So if you look back in the back, I mean, the number's a little bit more valuable.
Yes.
And this does include the irrigation. The only thing not included, correct me if I'm wrong, would be the backstop fencing and the line cost to install that, which, that, this, this does include the new, include the dugouts for each field. I did talk to Drayton, we were actually on a conference call there today about this. And he likes the idea of this layout. And I think it's going to kind of kill two birds with one stone type of thing, you know, and can take the pressure off parking wreck on diamond space and all that.
And I was actually just going to ask you, in this layout, you still have enough room for all the soccer fields that you need to?
True.
And that will not put any of the soccer fields on the diamond. These diamonds are just over top of the original sketch.
Okay, because it looks like you're comparing those to bigger ones.
She just put it over the top.
We didn't re-lay out the soccer field yet because we were just trying to figure out if this would even fit.
Sure.
So you're not going to have the line, because on here, it looks like the line was going to be part of the soccer field.
No.
You know, so you, you figured out that there's enough room there?
Yeah.
You need what, like eight of the small fields?
I don't even need eight. We put eight in there just because we know that we're going to build over the years. But right now, I'm working with five.
So if, right now, we had, we had eight used, the field shown. And he's going to be able to lay out the fields however he wants outside of those line infields. So he'll be able to just move them around, lay them out however he wants. The whole field is just going to be, if like one gentle slope, so he'll have the flexibility to move them around as he, as he needs to.
I mean, that's what you do right now, right?
True.
Because you've got the two fields right now.
He could put in a large field, he could put in a little field, he could do whatever he needs to do. What else can we talk about? As part of this, because we'd be getting rid of what we were calling like the overflow parking if we do put the fields here, because we would need that area for a field. So since that, there was going to be some like overflow grass parking on the side there that wasn't going to be paved, it was just grass parking, because we'll need it. We were looking at just actually using that future parking lot on the north side of West Third Avenue. It's pretty flat already, it's a pretty flat area. And we already are going to be putting in like the driveway for it, so we could use that as the overflow parking. Since you're already going to have, the curb cuts are going to be in, it would just be grass. So if it's really, really wet, bad weather, not going to be an ideal parking lot. But most of the time when you're going to need it, it should work.
The parking stall is in a dark gray up at the top, there's about 100, if you thought?
There's over 100, yeah.
So that's way more than we have now. So I think we'll be okay with that starting now.
The reason we just want to make sure we have some overflow is because we're doing curving gutter streets so no one's going to be able to park on the roads, on the sides of the roads. And that's why we're looking at keeping people in parking lots and not intentionally not letting them park along the roads. That's not an ideal situation for a sports complex.
Okay, you said you're going to bring the water main of Third Avenue across Third Avenue. If we would bring it down Walnut, do you remember how many feet that was?
It's a lot more. We only, we, yeah, it's a lot more.
It's almost double.
It's almost double, it's like 580, somewhere in that range if we go down Walnut. And it's only in the 350s roughly if we go from where we were going to end over to Washington. And the good thing about.
And you wouldn't have put storms over it.
And we're, yeah, we're going to actually extend just a little bit of storm sewer we were needing from this upper road, we just extend that over to Washington because it has a storm sewer system. So the other thing is we don't have, and one of the bigger cost savings is when we were going to connect down on Walnut with the water, we were actually going to have to do directional drilling underground because we had to go almost 100, 200 feet underground with that. Or we would have had to tear up the whole road and put it back in. So we were going to do directional drilling to connect the water main. Well, if we go this route, we're going to just do open trench installation, which is a lot less expensive for water main. Because we're going to have to put their driveways back anyway, and we're going to have to reach up the road. So we would just open it up with the water main, a lot less installation cost.
What you're saying right now, it's about 1.2 million or 1.3?
About 1.3 is what we're estimating it at.
270.
And that's to use Third?
To use Third.
When would this go off a bid?
We'd like to get it out within a month if possible.
I guess I'll get those shot up there so we can see those. And then can we make a decision on the next meeting?
Well, I mean, obviously, yes, we could make a decision and I am on here for the next few meetings, but this is just my personal opinion. I mean, hearing what she's saying, we know that we're probably going to have to use Third. So the issue is going to be, is the sidewalk going the south of the north? That's it.
That's why I think she can get everything shot.
So my question is, can't we just get them going and knowing that, you know?
It's going to be like one or the other.
We have a sidewalk on the south.
We're going to have a sidewalk issue somewhere. I mean, we're going to have a sidewalk somewhere, but we just aren't sure whether it's going to be the south of the north right now. And I'm, I'm guessing it's going to be the south. But could we just approve it, letting them get started, get it out for bids and stuff like that? I mean, at least get working on it so they can get it out for bids. And then at the next council meeting, we could look at the survey and decide.
Which side you want to go on and which goes out. The motion stuff?
Are you guys comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
That's my motion, Christine.
Okay.
Motion on a second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
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 We're on it.
We're on it.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll see you guys soon and everyone can see a look at six.
All right.
Could we get something drawn up that we could put like out here?
Yeah, this, that was just a draft thing, just so we could lay things out and get you guys to see it as quick as possible, but we will.
I mean, that, that's huge being able to put two baseball fields in there.
I think it's, it's really a, it's like a game-changing thing. It goes from just soccer fields to now solving multi-season, so that's pretty cool. We'll get that drawn up for you as soon as we can and we'll get the stuff back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, have a good day.
Discussion possible action on approving the annual urban renewal process. She's been working on this, she had the.
You'll see it attached in some orange striped page. This is an annual report that's due by December 1st. A lot of the numbers come from our tip in order, this is just a reporting for the state and to our department that we have to do, and it was done with the assistance of Maggie. I feel confident in it.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by a second.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion possible action on approving TIF certification to the county.
And this was actually completed by Maggie for us. This is the tip dollars that we will be requesting from the county for this, for the next fiscal year 23. You'll see on the back the breakdown of it, which will now include the budget lines rebate that has started. That would be due, otherwise the rest is all, all items that we've had in the past is disproportionate for what we need.
Motion to approve the certification.
Second.
Motion on a second, Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action in reference to adding a member to the party department. So this is for Nick Bruss, who just moved to town. He was originally from Lisbon, lived in Martel. He was the assistant chief in Martel until he built his house here. He is looking to get on the fire department. The fire department voted in hand, so they just put him on. And he's also a first responder, so he would be able to run medical calls as a certified medical person.
Motion to approve adding Nick to the fire department.
Second.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to sick leave for Lloyd, who's part of a merger of the police department.
I put this on here because it's kind of the one thing that's been kind of sticking with me that I, I don't like about what we did. I'm really happy with the whole thing except for that. Because as a council, we've sat up here for the four years that I've been on here, saying that we want to make sure that our employees are all whole. And we always want to make our employees whole. And in this situation, Jeff was not made whole. And I understand setting precedent, but the reality is, I don't know, maybe 10, 15, 20 years from now? I have no idea. Maybe they would someday combine the, the public works departments or something like that. I have no clue. But if they do, those employees deserve the same thing that Jeff deserves. And what he deserves is to be made whole for what he had. He, at that time, if you guys all remember, there were definitely days that Jeff made, he could have taken time off. What, you know, I specifically remember when he thought he had COVID, he was not feeling very well. And he, he tested negative, so he ended up coming back, you know, as soon as he could, but he still wasn't up to 100%. But he came back because we only have one officer. And so, you know, Amy was on maternity leave, she got to use all of her sick leave. Every employee who has left the city in good standing, you know, was, was able to use the stuff that they were able to use. And I feel like Jeff got the short end of the stick. As far as how to make it right with him, I'm not saying, I, I think, I don't know the magic number is, you put it in the packet, but I can't think of it off the top of my head. Is it 300?
285.
So 285 and what was he making, 21 something an hour-ish? I mean, you're talking about like $7,500 that he would have had coming. I'm not even saying you have to give him the whole 7,500, but maybe you pay it out to him at half. Because if an employee retired from the city of Lisbon, they would have the option to get their sick time paid to them at half. I don't think he should get all of it because I don't think you should, I personally, and this is something that if I was going to be on the council, give would address. I think our sick time policy is the problem. And I think it allows for people to bank way too much sick time. So I don't think he should get all of it, but he has been a responsible employee who didn't just use his sick time every single time he got it, and we're punishing him for that. And so I'm of the mindset that we should pay him his sick time at half pay for the hours that he had. Doug, Amy does have her hand up on the Zoom to comment.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Amy.
Yep, I was, um.
Good talk.
We lost Amy.
We can't hear you, Amy, so I don't know if you're still talking.
Hello? Oh, okay, hold on.
You're back.
Okay, there we are. I just want to say, you know, I, things have been wonderful, the merger has gone great. I couldn't ask for much better. I did have the opportunity to use all my sick t, sick leave. And so I'm speaking on Jeff's behalf for the reason that all, everything was done. The merger was done beautifully, except for, we were kind of left out. I think like in the contract, you know, we, it was down to every line item of, you know, the car and equipment and things like that. But I just don't feel like the employees, the only two that were left, were really mentioned in it or taken care of, I guess. And so if this could be one thing that Jeff did get out of it, you know, I, we did. We, we worked ridiculous hours and we came in sick. I, during duration, I went out when I was pregnant. You know, there's just different things that we did, and we weren't asking for anything. But we were hearing throughout the years of how there was abuse of sick leave other places. And we never did that, Jeff never did that. And so he had this sick leave built up, and now it's just, it was gone. So I guess in my personal opinion, you know, on behalf of Jeff, I would wholeheartedly love to have him get something in return for some or all of the sick leave that he had banked up.
Well, thank you for commenting, Amy. I, I agree with you 100%. And you know, as far as like during that whole conversion and, and the guy, the joining of the departments, it was a lot, and it was something that I know for me, I had never had to deal with before. And so I apologize, because I do feel like you and Jeff kind of got lost in the shuffle there. And so I apologize for my part on that, because I, I agree with everything that you're saying. And that's why I'm asking for this to be readdressed.
How many hours are you at? 285?
285.
About $7,037?
It's about 7,500-ish. I don't know what his exact rate was, but I think it was somewhere in the 21. Amy, do you know?
I believe it was, I think we were at 2163.
I think it was somewhere around there too. And I think I figured it maybe at 22, and I think it was like 7,500 bucks.
You know, I, I agree with pretty much everything said. Everything said, not pretty much. The, and it's, I don't know if this is a problem I have with it or not, but I thought we tried to be fairer or to compensate, and it was, we couldn't do it.
It wasn't that we couldn't.
The code didn't allow for it.
No, our attorney told us not to do it because it was a conflict of interest. And I agree with him, it would be a conflict of interest if we were just willy-nilly giving an employee this. But we are in a very unique situation, or not a conflict of interest, a precedent. We were setting a precedent.
Yeah, and I think there was a union.
Yeah, the problem is it's going forward. You know, when you have the one union employee, then the next one, technically, they, if they file agreements, then they would potentially get it.
Correct.
They'd have to go to arbitration.
But this is such a unique situation that we're combining departments. This wasn't just, I mean, I, I get it.
What probably should have happened is when this whole thing started was, the city of Lisbon should have paid the city of Mount Vernon money and had their bank transferred over. You know, because then you're not violating the contract.
Yeah, that, that was discussed at the time.
And I did, just because I, I figured that, you know, you guys have always been very good at taking care of your employees. I knew something was probably going to happen. I did talk to Chris at Mount Vernon, and he said it's opening in Kalamazoo, that he really wasn't interested in doing that now.
Yeah.
But I wanted to reach out to just cover all our bases and.
The other thing too with that, and when we discussed it originally, the reason we didn't is because he makes a lot more money over Mount Vernon than he did here. So if we're paying him to take sick time in Mount Vernon, we would have had to prioritize the hours and adjust and everything.
That was true.
Yeah, that was a discussion that we had.
Because the value was equal going over there.
But we made a mistake and we're well past that now, we can't, you know, rehash that. So at this point, we've just got to decide what we want to do to make it right with Jeff, or if we want to do anything to make it right with Jeff. And that is probably going to look at either paying him at half or two-thirds, or if you guys want to pay him the full, whatever, like whatever council agrees on. But I do think that all of us sitting up here can agree that he did get the short end of the stick on this.
Re-let me on the rules. If he was to retire at that time, would he have gotten anything for his?
He got one for half.
He got half.
So like the contract just says upon retirement, an employee gets one half of his sick leave and monetary value paid out over the course of the normal paycheck. What, the unique thing about how contracts are written, it doesn't say anything other than that. So it doesn't allow for, you know, that's the only situation it allows for, right? So when like an arbitrator comes up in the future, it's just going to be something that we're going to have to be ready to address if that, you know, if we do this tonight, any, anyone going forward could, because at the end of the day, why, I totally get that's a unique situation. Arbitrator's probably not going to view it as that, they're going to view it as.
But would they view it as we're retiring this position? So technically, he's retiring if we just did half. Like if we did a half, we could say it that we've retired this position from Lisbon. The whole department, the whole department?
Yeah, I don't.
So it would be a, a retirement type of payout?
I don't.
I mean, I don't think that that applies unless you have another, another employee in the same unique situation, because this is a very unique situation.
You don't have somebody in that situation, but if, if employee B decides that I'm going to leave employment, and he's got 480 hours of time.
Well, but he's deciding to leave. We didn't tell him he had to, we told Jeff he had to.
Right, but the contract just says retiring, it doesn't say anything.
I understand that, but when somebody comes to argue that, I think it's a rational person can notice the difference between the two.
Yeah, I just don't know that, I don't know, arbitrators in the union, I've just dealt with it before.
Yeah.
It's just, it's.
Sticky, I understand.
It's very.
I don't think that Jeff should be punished because of something that we think might happen in the future.
I like Jeff, and it's just a tough, I think it probably shouldn't have been done long time.
It should, you're right. We definitely messed up. Either way, I'm going to make a motion to pay him the sick time that he has coming at half. The rate, or half the time.
I'll second that.
Directly to Jeff? Yes.
You want to pay it one month's own or?
Yeah, one month's own, let's just get it done and be done.
At half.
At half, at half?
I think I came up with a little over $6,000.
Yeah, so that, 6270.
Yeah.
But that would be the full. That would be, that would be.
Also be 30 to half.
Yeah, so that, right.
I got motion in a second. Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Resolution 32, 2021, approval of transfer of funds. These are for interest payments on the bonds that we have for splash pad and fire, fire and truck.
Motion to approve transfers.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Uh, nothing today.
City engineer?
Oh.
He won't be here, so I'm glad that's it. Public work. All right, so they're forming up for intersections for sidewalks, so that should be completed here this week. All the patching has been completed as far as that work on thirty. So, once we get this done, we should be able to move forward with going out for the resurfacing and get that taken care of. He did get some, I got some questions from the DNR on the well project. I forwarded to him. He said he's got that straight away, so we should be moving forward with that. And that should be all for his section. For mine, we have a resident on School Street that needs to fix their sewer in front of the bus barn there at school. So pretty much from John's driveway, which would be Walmart, to the far east exit of the L E C C will be shut at some point next week. I'm working with the school on that. Pat was not in today. He's going to be in tomorrow, so Rod, Pat, myself, and Brandon will get this worked out, and then we'll get the notification out to everybody. Other than that, we have a route for leaves, so we go through and you have your leaves done. It might be two days, it might be four days, but we're just going to continue going with this route and just make the routine and tell our last to pick up. So, other than that, we're, we're good.
Person or, no, I'm reading. Questions for Travis?
Can you trace?
Person or?
I have to carry with me tonight.
You don't think so? Are you sure?
Probably.
Later. Have you got anything for crying? Who's department?
None.
Nothing? Anybody got anything? Ambulance?
Nothing.
Fire chief?
Uh, fire related. We had a large sum of money donated. It was over a thousand dollars from Memorial. We keep these accounts separate, so what we decided to do was we're taking association funds and buying three AEDs. One will be from the association, one will be from the memorial, and then one will be through city budgeted that we had been prepared for. The AEDs will go in the backup medical truck. One will go into the grass truck, which is used for non-medical people that can render CPR that aren't certified. And the third AED will be in the pumper truck in the hope never happens event that one of us fighting a fire. That, those vehicles won't be there, so that would be on board in case we would delete it. So, those are ordered. Also, the fire association is buying all the members a new pair of boots, which are long overdue. They're three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty dollars a pair, so we're going to be taking care of that. And then in reference to the AFG grant, we did get fitted for gear, so there's twenty-two sets of gear ordered. They promised me March, April, and May first, so...
What do you do with the old boots?
I haven't decided yet. There's some, what do you need them to, or, some of them are in that shape, but I know mine are, those were the set that I was given hand-me-downs from when I started, so I don't know how it'll be all right.
Was that twenty-two, including Nick?
I'm sorry. Was it Russ?
Nick Russ. Was he, did he get fitted?
Uh, no. So I have a plan in place, so there is still going to be gear that's, I went through the whole list of people, and there's still gear that's going to be in service that those people get. When they're, when that gear comes due, they'll get new gear that we can absorb and like to budget. So essentially, there's, when it's all said and done, there's going to be approximately eight to ten firefighters that don't have new gear, but all of them will have gear that's, a lot of them have gear that's measured for them that hasn't reached the...
Life expectancy or...
Right. So that's how I went through the list and did that.
So how does Nick go then? Because he doesn't have gear that's good, measured for him.
So Nick won't have technically gear that's measured for him, but he will get some gear that'll have two years of life left. And he, really, for the first year or so, we will put him into a burning building. So the main thing is just get him gear that fits, and then we'll get him new gear when it expires.
Okay.
Smoke detectors, uh, fire department. Do you have those batteries in the back there? Fire department, who knows that?
No, we, we have the program and went through all the ones that we're, we have with that program. If people call, I've received probably three, four calls a year, we'll try to arrange times for people to go over and get them, but I can, they have maintenance on, on site that's supposed to be doing that, but I mean, we're willing to, you know, if there are people that can't do it or need it done, we can go do that. But one thing is with that program, they were not qualified for the program because they were under a maintenance company that was supposed to do it. So, but I can reach out to them. Is there somebody specifically that you, no, I don't have that. I'll mention it. If they want us to come do that, we can arrange that. Anybody else got any questions for Brandon, for fire department? Who's been there? Um, I met with Steve, the owner of Johnson County Refuge, last week. He is in the process of selling the business to Lake Shore Recycling Systems out of Chicago. He will be here next month to discuss this. The good news about this is, nothing will change with our contract. Just some of the highlights of it, he has to, the company, the new company has to run his trucks, his logo for three years. He's still going to manage the Johnson County Division, but he, he came in here, he said they gave him a deal he couldn't resist, and they're taking care of his employees. We won't see, he said, you will not see anything different here. Your contract is absorbed. They won't raise nothing. And I even talked about it in the future, like what their rates are, and he said they're very comparable. So he'll be here next meeting, and he'll, he'll have more in-depth presentation on it, and I have to answer any questions that you have. I will, I do have some info that I received from him that I will put in the next packet, so you can see that ahead of time and read through that. So, I attended the city municipal insurance workshop presented by E and C last week. I went down with our agents here in town and went through, went through that, which was, a lot of good information on workers' count, on different, different avenues, different things to make sure that you're prepared for. And so both of us, Scott and I, learned some nice things there. Tomorrow, Christine and I will be heading to Corvettville for the annual budget workshop. This is the first one, and it's the closest one, so we're going to go take care of that tomorrow. We actually started working today on getting some dates after the first of the year for the, our local budget workshops. Just so you all are aware, on the tenth, which will be Wednesday, the school is going to come in, and they're going to help us with the floor out here. They are willing to, they're going to take off the finish, strip it down, and then they're going to put three, four, five coats of wax on the floor out here. It's been needed for quite a while. It's in not very good shape. So we worked out, it's not going to cost us anything. We went over and assisted them with paint in the parking lot, and we got our new paint, uh, spray, and they gave me paint. So, and it was good for us, because that gave us an opportunity to learn how to spray and use it before we decided to make squid and lime on the roof. But just want to let you all know, they're going to, they're going to do the waxing on Thursday, which is Veterans Day when we're closed anyway. So then it'll be open and ready to go on Friday. So there might be a period of time where the front door, we'll have to route people into the fire station, but we'll make sure the signs are correct. And it won't be that long on Wednesday when they're stripping out the wax that's on there. And then just knowing that it's possibly closed on Thursday for Veterans Day. That's all I have.
Brandon? Christina, you anything?
No, all my reports are done and headed to the budget workshop with them.
My report, I'm going to go first. Just wanted to say, appreciate everything Stephanie and Travis have done for me for the last two years, and the past four years. Got a lot of projects going on right now. We need to keep moving forward with those projects and make sure they get done. Congratulations, Mike Williams, Ricky Scott, and Nate. Another four years for those guys. They'll start first meeting in January. I'd like to try to get them in here to at least talk to them about some stuff. Guys have been doing brush or leaf pickup, have been doing a great job. I see that. I see how they're sucking up the leaves as they go, or doing a great job at that. I think that's all I got. Come on, let's go first. Go on, Nate.
All right. Reiterate the thanks to the public works crews for keeping our, keeping our city clean and working on the leaves. Leaf backs working great, right? And, yeah, the same thing, there's still a couple meetings left, but Stephanie and Travis, thank you both for your service, and hopefully get your back someday. Remember, and, yeah, thanks for every, all the citizens who came out and voted with seven people on the ticket, I think it was. Seems like it was a pretty good turnout, so thank you for that. That's it.
Sure.
I would also like to congratulate Nate on getting reelected. I have really enjoyed working with you and obviously worked with you pretty closely during some of this stuff, so I look forward to seeing you finish off a lot of the projects that we have going, and just all of you guys. And I know that you guys have all spent a lot of time and effort into these projects, and I know that you'll see them through, and that makes me happy that there's some people sitting up here that I know will make sure that stuff gets done that needs to get done. So congratulations to Nate, and that is it.
Thanks.
John?
Well, congratulations to everybody that came out and voted and had the, wear the ball to run for office. It's been a long time coming. We were not having full slate. I'd like to talk just briefly about the activities of the Friends of Lisbon Library. We're going to be launching a partnership with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and that's where all the children, preschool, under six years old, will get a book a month for free. And Dolly Parton isn't paying for that, we are. So we'll be raising funds. It will be a little over twenty-five dollars per preschooler, and...
That's why we're using Nate.
Yeah, right. But at least it's organized this. I mean, it's not only in the United States, but like Australia, Canada, and one other country. So it's a pretty big deal. They put out, I just read that, one point eight million books a month. And we're excited about it, because we've looked into it and the benefit to preschoolers to have a book to read, and hopefully the parents are overs下来will read to them and read these books many times. So we think it's going to be doing great things for our community and for our school system. That's all I have right now. There'll be a news release hopefully coming out next week that will explain it more thoroughly. And if you have any questions or want to write a check, the library can help you out for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Um, I want to congratulate Nate, first of all. Congratulations. And congratulate Rick Scott and Mike Williams. And I'd also like to throw out there, thank you to everyone who's ran. I know this past year, there was a lot of vocal people throughout the town, and it was nice seeing a very full ballot, that people cared. This is a thankless job. I think we all can agree on that. This past year has really shown that. So it's a thankless job, and you, you can't win for losing. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who did run. Congratulations to the winners. And Steph and Travis will be missed. However, we still have a few more meetings. One thing I would like to welcome is Mike and Ricky to join us for the next few meetings before their term actually starts, because we do have so many projects. There might be some input that you guys could throw at us, you know, as you guys will be in those seats moving forward. So we welcome you to the meetings the next three, I think, before your term starts. So feel free to come, so you kind of get an idea of what we are working on. Thanks to the city workers for sucking up all those leaves. Doing a great job. And that's all I got. Oh, and I am attending the, what is it, the MLA?
The MOLI.
I am attending that on, yes, I'm attending that on December sixteenth through Zoom, so.
Um, I will say that Brandon, at some point, we should have some discussion on here about the last council meeting in December. We will.
That's on my list. I didn't get down tonight. I didn't think you wanted to think that far ahead, but I was going to actually talk about it the next week.
When's the, our meeting, what school?
February.
That's now in February. They decided that they wanted to wait for the new council member school board to get in. So that just, I forgot to mention that again. That was just decided last week, so.
I saw my school board minutes, so I knew that it was going to be...
Uh, the first meeting we had, they did the superintendent interviews, and the second one, I think there was a van conference, a horse conference, so they didn't want to do it that night, so.
You have anything else?
I don't have any more.
I need your...